Hi.
Oh, okay, that was a approval of the minutes and delayed reaction, I believe. Correct, Chad?
I said I.
Okay, approval, okay. It just came across after we had gotten, thank you.
Just want to note for the record, too, Chad Schlu is appearing via Zoom and he was authorized to appear by the mayor and Eric Atkinson.
Very good, thank you. Okay, with that, um, we do not have any public hearings tonight. Under public comments, public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. So if you'd like to give us your name and fill out the little sheet in front of the podium and step up to the podium and push the microphone on, now is your chance to speak. Uh, public comment is open. Last call for public comments. Okay, we'll close public comments, move on with the rest of our meeting. Under five A unfinished business, amending title fourteen, chapter four to adjust minimum lot size for unsued lots created or modified on or after January first, twenty twenty four to one acre. Discussion on possible waiver of second reading. Uh, this, we already have this introduced and uh, first reading's been waived and we're at the second reading and David Schofield, if you want to take it to the next level?
Yeah, so this will be increasing our minimum lot size for uh, single family uh, non-sued lots from twenty thousand square feet to one acre. This does not impact existing lots that exist prior to uh, December thirty first of this year, so. Uh, this is only for new lots created after January first of twenty twenty four. So this is the second, um, we're recommending waiver the second reading, um, and then it'll come back to you for final approval on October sixteenth.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schofield. So if anyone would like to make a motion to waive the second reading, go ahead Gretchen.
I will move to waive the second reading of or amending tab, uh, title fourteen, chapter four, adjusting minimum lots.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Somebody like to second it? Mary, go ahead, please.
I will second Gretchen's motion.
Okay, motion been made and second to waive the second reading. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to six A, proposed deer hunt on city-owned lands. I'm gonna let Eric explain this one to you.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So Lieutenant Chad Merzinski, the Menominee Police Department is requesting permission to call the herd in the area of our city landfill and the uh, Menominee Police Department shooting range. It is overrun with deer, causing damage and also creating hazards, of course, in the public on our roadways and and in order for him to be able to legally bow hunt in that area, he needs permission from city council. Staff has reviewed this request and we are recommending approval of the request, provided that there is a check-in with our environmental program coordinator, Megan Hines, as well as Dave Frank, our street superintendent, to make sure that there aren't landfill activities taking place in that area or other, other unintended activities that might interfere with the hunt. Uh, so if you decide to approve it, we do ask that you follow or add in those staff recommendations. Lieutenant Chad Merzinski is here in the audience tonight, so he is available to answer any questions if you so have them.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Um, so, Ryan, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I was wondering if um, is this just this one person going to be allowed? And if, say, uh, you know, some other city resident was interested, what would be their process for um, applying to?
Okay.
Or is this only open to uh, city staff or for police department staff?
Well, we're trying to, we're calling the herd just a little bit and and there is availability to the public if they want to hunt uh, in Phalen Park or Menominee, Menomon Park. Uh, they can check with the Parks and Rec Department and they can affiliate that. But meanwhile, I think David Schofield could probably fulfill a little bit more on that, Mr. Schofield.
Yeah, at this point, I don't think that we want to have other people uh, traipsing around in the range area. Um, so I, I guess I'll defer to Eric on this, but I, I don't know that I'd want to have more people in that area.
Yeah, part of the concern is if we have general public in the MPD shooting range, there are, there is, there are items there that we certainly don't want the public necessarily interfering with that, and it's also locked off too with fencing. The other part is too, because we have other city activities, we want to make sure that we don't have people that haven't been properly vetted to be able to hunt back there. So to get to the first part of your question on there, so far is only Lieutenant Chad Merzinski that has made the application for it. However, if there is other city staff that want to assist, that's something that we could certainly take into consideration as it comes forward.
And you know, as long as Chad's here, uh, Lieutenant, if you'd come up to the microphone, maybe I've got a question for you. All right, so uh, you might put your microphone on. So are you a accomplished deer hunter and uh, I'm just wondering if you know how to shoot a gun, is all? And it, and, and this is gun hunter or bow hunting?
Uh, be for bow hunting, yes.
Okay, very good. And then uh, do you have to get a bow, a Wisconsin bow hunting license besides?
Correct, you have to follow all the DNR regulations with a bow hunting license too.
Okay, um, so is there any deer out there?
There's a few, yes.
All right, as long as you got Chad up here, if council would like to ask a question, Gretchen, go ahead, please.
Well, I, I was wondering if this was, was this call recommended by the DNR or, you know, who determined the need for this call considering the multiple other private locations and protected locations that the deer are spewing out of around our city right now?
That's a good question, yes. Um, this is just from my personal observation, had, has nothing to do with the DNR. Um, I'm a, I'm a range instructor at our, um, at our range, and so I'm down here quite frequently. Um, and just like uh, Erica talked about, one of the restrictions is that it is um, locked off to the public on both the, the uh, range and landfill itself. And I would have a unique position, right? I'm also in charge of the scheduling for the range, so I know when there's going to be shooters down in that location um, to make it safe for people that would hunt.
I think it's a great idea. I think that um, you know, you guys know the area and um, you know, we do have a, quite a presence of deer within the city. Uh, I did have a chance to talk to WQOW and I, it just somehow it just came out that we have the smartest urban deer that I know of because I've never seen one cross the street using a cellphone yet. So, you know, that being said, uh, you know, our deer are urbanized and they are smart and there's a lot of them, so uh, thank you for, for being willing to go down here and, and partake in that hunt, Eric.
No, I, I think you covered it, Mayor. Uh, certainly, uh, again, we would recommend approval for it, just provided that uh, hopefully you'd add in the staff recommendations and making sure there's coordination between Mr. Frank and Ms. Hines.
Riley?
Um, since there is such an issue with the deer, is there the normal limits on how many can be shot in that area?
Yeah, they'd have to follow Wisconsin's licensing program. And Eric?
Yes, I'd like to put a motion in to allow Lieutenant Chad Arkinsky uh, the Menominee Police Department uh, permission to bow hunt on city-owned land at the city landfill and uh, Menominee Police Department shooting range.
Thank you, good motion, Lee.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Yes, Gretchen?
I had one more, um, I just realized I forgot the other question. So uh, is the deer meat going to be for personal use? Sorry for pulling you back up.
Yes, so, um, since it is up for unlimited tags or purpose, this isn't for deer management unit where we get unlimited tags, um, this would just be for uh, personal use at this time.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Good question. Any other question, any other discussion items? All in favor have said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is that a, opposed or in favor? Okay, opposed. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to um, the six B, proposed city hall, real estate listing, one-year contract with the Ellison Group. Uh, Ellison, uh, Rich Ellison has been doing it in the past, been doing a good job, and Eric, you want to touch on this?
Yeah, so his contract actually expired at the end of September and we're looking to renew the agreement that we had with him to cover this next year for the remainder of twenty twenty-three and into twenty twenty-four. Uh, we feel as city staff that Rich has done a fine job representing the city and coordinating uh, people uh, coming into our, our building. And I think he's done a fine job because we have some great tenants here and we're hopefully uh, going to be able to keep it that way.
Great. So if anybody would like to make that motion, we could do so at this time. Eric, go ahead, please.
I'll put him, uh, put in a motion to allow the Ellison Group LLC exclusive right to lease contract for the city Menominee uh, for one year that expires in September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Yep, good motion, Ben.
Uh, it would be September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, good motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? Randy?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brings it down to six C, proposed, proposal to order twenty twenty-five model squad cars in twenty twenty-three for the Menominee Police Department, and I'm gonna uh, have Eric um, speak to this, Eric.
Sure, uh, before I get started, I may have to call for support from Chief Hollister in here because this is a confusing topic because of the, the way ordering police cars are right now for any vehicles for that matter. So the Menominee Police Department is looking to place an early order for their squad cars. These are cars that have been pre-approved in the capital improvement projects for us and part of our two-year borrowing cycle. They do not have a dollar amount yet because they will not be able to acquire a bid a dollar amount until, I believe it is tomorrow. Now the bid a dollar amount will come in under budget and will also allow for them to be able to put in new internal components. And the reason why that they're asking for this permission is because if they do not order now, they in, in all likelihood will not receive any squad cars for twenty twenty-four. It would have to wait till twenty twenty-five and, in order to be able to receive them. And this was an issue that we talked very briefly about earlier this year when it came to the most recent order of the squad cars that we ended up missing out on being able to order hybrids because we ordered too late when it was normally a time that we could order. And so here they're at a, at a pinch to try to be able to get it done sooner. I, I would ask Chief Hollister to come to the podium to provide, provide an explanation for it. But this would allow for us to be able to make the order now. We're not paying for anything right now. We wouldn't pay until, until those cars come in. Hopefully they would come in next year, but we don't know for sure. But Chief Hollister could provide greater detail than I can about this particular endeavor.
Since uh, COVID, uh, ordering squads didn't become kind of a chess match there. The time banks for ordering have shrunk way down and uh, with that being said, on a normal year, we could always order squads from January to June. And so this year we went to order squads in April and we were turned down saying that the order bank was closed. With that being said, they sent, they sent further correspondence saying that we could order squads later this fall. And they would give us an order date. The order date is October sixteenth and it's probably going to be a one or two day thing. And they don't know how long it will be open for. So, moving forward, to get the squads ordered, you have to have a purchase order. And we don't know what the price is going to be, but in order to open up that price bank, you gotta have the purchase order to open it up. And then we make our determination at that time. You wouldn't pay for the squads until twenty twenty-four. And then adding to this mix, this, during twenty twenty-three, not all of them are going to be built this year, and so they'll go into next year, twenty twenty fours. And uh, it'll be a short build year for the twenty twenty fours and they're going to start the twenty twenty fives in the spring of next year, twenty twenty-four. So, if we don't order on October sixteenth, we probably won't get uh, twenty twenty-four and we probably will get a twenty twenty-five, which is okay because it's going to be built next, next year. But if we sit back on all that, we're waiting until twenty twenty-six. So that's, it's convoluted, but that's the way Ford is working ever since COVID and uh, that's what we got to look at, I guess.
So the, the other thing to bear in mind, counsel, is that once we do get the price on that, we will bring that back here for final approval for you since, since we will have a dollar amount at that time. But this will allow the chief to be able to make that order.
Any questions for, any, any questions for the chief? Okay, oh Gretchen?
Well, so, if we don't have the price, the way I'm, I'm hearing it, we've already approved the order, so we're have to vote yes on the whatever cost comes at us, do we not?
Not necessarily.
We would just cancel the order?
Yes.
And that would cause probably future ordering issues, or no?
Maybe, maybe not.
I just wanted to clear where, because it, the decision's being made now in my opinion about whether we're going to pay for it or not, too.
Then we buy Chevys. Instead of Porsches.
That's okay.
All right, they have things, or Lee, go ahead.
There are a thing that potentially may muddy this timing too is the, this auto strike that's going on. And I don't think right now that, well, maybe that explorers are including that because they're hitting the high revenue for the companies, so it's could delay it even more.
It could delay it more, yes, and, and if we also get locked in under the October sixteenth, if, if the price is what we're expecting to be a good price, uh, the twenty twenty threes this year are going to be held over. If they end up being twenty twenty fours, they're going to hold that price of the twenty twenty-three, so. If our twenty twenty fours end up being a twenty twenty-five, there's a good chance also that they would hold that price of the twenty twenty fours in the twenty twenty fives. Does that make sense? I, I'm sorry, there's too many years there, so usually they'll hold your price over from the next year if you don't get what you want, usually.
Sounds like a good plan to me, Lee.
I'll make a motion approving the early ordering of the, of the squads as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Gretchen?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Thank you, chief. Um, all in favor, any discussion? And I think we need to do a regular vote. All in favor have said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to uh, six D, uh, Stepping Stones Appliance Contract. Um, great news for Stepping Stones, Mr. Schofield.
Yeah, so as we've discussed on a number of occasions, we are the, the grant holder of the Stepping Stones Grant. Uh, they need to, uh, they're getting close to completing the project and now they need to put stuff inside of it, so they're uh, in the process of acquiring the stuff. Uh, one of the, they, they have, I, I believe it was approximately fifteen thousand dollars um, that set aside in the grant for furnishings. Um, they have a contract that they've asked us to approve in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and ten cents for the appliances. So this is ranges, uh, washing machines, that sort of thing. Um, and I am recommending approval of, of the contract. In the packet is the bidding information that they issued. They did, they did issue a, um, public bid notice. Um, they ended up only getting one bid, um, but it wasn't for lack of trying. Um, and the bid is for uh, Denny's Appliance, is the bid holder.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schofield. I, I'm, I'm happy to see that a Menominee firm got the bid, so that's always a, that's always a positive note for our city. So thank you for that information. Okay, I'm going to give it to the council. Our floor is open, folks. If you'd like to make a motion to support this, Mary, go ahead, please.
I would make a motion to approve the appliance contract for the Stepping Stones project for the total amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and ten cents.
Okay, sounds like a good motion, Ben. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Go ahead, Cody.
I'll second.
Great. Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, a roll call vote, please.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough? I'm sorry. Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That moves us down to budget transfers. I'll have Eric address this, Eric.
Yeah, so in your packet, you'll have four budget transfers uh, presented in front of you. The first one is a request from Jeremy Hoyt in the Water Department. He's going to need to acquire some more meters for the increased amount of development that we're seeing here primarily with the Maplewood Eco and then the Estover Development. He has the opportunity to acquire those meters by transferring money in an existing account that he doesn't feel that he is going to be using those funds. He feels that this is a good opportunity to be able to do so, so that way when those developments are finished, he's going to be able to install said meters. Then we've got the unfortunate news that our email costs were going to be going up considerably from Google. We use Gmail services. And then uh, to top it off, we found out that in order for us to be able to archive emails, which we need to do so for records-keeping purposes and records retention, that that cost has gone up exponentially. So the IT department is requesting a budget transfer and this is coming from our contingency fund for the amount of twelve thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars. And we're recommending that, that approved as well just because of the records retention, so we're keeping up with our state law requirements. And that was something that we couldn't anticipate in twenty twenty-two when the budgeting process was taking place. We only received this notice of recent, recent times in the last couple of months. If you have questions about this, we have our IT manager, Tom Hetzel, is in the audience and can answer questions about it. The next one, so we're seeing, uh, this comes from the Fire Department, so Chief Class needs to acquire some new pagers and, and apparently pagers are old. Does anybody use those anymore? The Fire Department does, and they, they need to get some more pagers. They have some money left over in an account that is going to be unused. They are requesting that we, we acquire some more pagers to replace the ones that, that are defunct. And that takes me back to my college days. All right, last one then, we're, we're talking about a spec, spectral photom meter, meter. I have no idea what that is, but it's needed in order to have clean water. It's used for phosphorus analysis, so this comes from Paul Sturck and he is requesting a budget transfer to be able to replace his last one that has stopped working and he has funds in this account that he will not be using and is requesting that be transferred to cover that expense. And I apologize for butchering that word. That, and that is it.
Okay, well, thank you, Eric. Um, um, for the most part, all good stuff. Uh, I don't know much about their email server or whatever it is, um, but I know Tom's here. If you have any questions, you can certainly answer them. Otherwise, all the other, I understand the pager thing and, and the others, so, yes, Gretchen.
I, I do have a question. It's for the Google Workspace was, was um, the, Google doesn't have any like municipal discounts or anything for small communities that are using their sites. Did we, did we exhaust any of those?
Well, I did go to them, you know, when they increased the cost. Well, first of all, they started charging us for archiving. There's a, a feature called Google Vault, which basically keeps track of everything, so if you delete your email, I can always recover it. You know, once a person leaves, we archive the email and then we can do public record. And I did go to them. I told them many times how disappointed I was with the major increase in cost this year. And they did come down a little bit, but then the, they tried to get us into a three-year contract on it as well and, and like, no. We typically go with a one-year contract on this stuff, and they did reduce it some, but, you know, they, they started breaking apart their services, stuff that was included in the normal purchase before, and now they're charging extra for it and then also increasing the cost of their regular service too, so.
I mean, I, I assume this would be a lot cheaper than creating your own server farm, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, you know, that, I, I went to a little number of years ago, you know, looking at bringing in what they call an on-premise server and, you know, changing over uh, back to, back to Outlook. But even now, if we wanted to do that, that's not even an option anymore. You got two major players that are out there, that's Google and Microsoft. And, you know, those are the two players that we'd end up dealing with because of these pub, public records requests. So, yeah, I wish I could give you other news, but I'm, I'm not happy about it either.
Case considering what Google's been doing to me personally. But I thought maybe they were going to be kind to smaller cities, but.
They're not kind to anybody.
Dreams.
Right.
Yeah, and to, to Tom's credit, he did shop around to take a look and see if we converted back to Microsoft Outlook, if that would be providing us a savings. And it was negligible, so it, unfortunately, I think we're kind of a slave to the two major players as, as Tom had put it. And Google kind of has us at the moment.
Was there any savings, Tom, since I threw my computer into the dumpster?
I checked into that and no, there really wasn't.
Okay, all right, thank you, Tom. Any other questions for Tom? Appreciate it. Okay, well, um, there you have it, uh, the budget transfers. If we'd like to make a motion to support these budget transfers, we could do so at this time. Mary? Oh, go ahead.
Do you want all, all of these together or separate?
We can do them.
You can do them as presented, all four.
Okay, then I would make a motion to approve the budget transfer requests as presented.
Thank you. Good motion. Is there, Riley?
I would, I would second Mary's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, getting down to my favorite part of the meeting, and that's the mayor's report. Um, we are, we have so many good things happening in the city of Menominee and, and it's pretty incredible, actually. Um, the Clean Sweep Hazardous Materials Collection Event uh, last, uh, went ahead as scheduled on Thursday, September twenty-first and it attracted a hundred and ninety-one residents from the city of Menominee, the town of Menominee and the town of Red Cedar. And we look forward to another event in the fall of twenty twenty-four. Uh, big thank you goes out to Megan, Megan Hines, for putting that on and all the volunteers that made it successful. I know Dave and Dave and uh, the chief and, and the, you know, a lot of city workers and it was a great event, so uh, we look forward to that. Um, again, uh, also the Homecoming Parade and Let's Paint the Town concert uh, was on Friday, September twenty-second and was extremely well-retained. I don't know if anybody uh, from any of this body made it to that event or not, but uh, I'm hoping that we can make this event an annual event because look at the crowd. Uh, I started chunking out fifty people and fifty people, a hundred people, and by the time I got done, I had around four thousand uh, people there, and I don't know if this was as packed as it was. Uh, there was people behind and all around, so. Uh, it was a great event and Chris Cruzy put a great concert on and uh, just, just really, it was perfect weather. Uh, I had positive, um, positive uh, comments from a lot of people in the crowd saying we want to do this more often because it was a place for us to go in between the parade and the game. And I talked to Joe Zdowski, also the school administrator, and he says, it was a hit, huge hit. So um, so that was really cool. Uh, thank you for uh, to Let's Paint the Town, um, for being able to reschedule, um, Chris Cruzy and for, of course, the city and other people coming together to make this all happen and, and uh, well, it was a, it was a real good day, so that was cool. Um, I also have a um, mayoral proclamation tonight for White Kane Safety Day. And um, they all had a copy of this. I won't, you, you all have a copy of this, so I won't go into the reading of it. But um, it is special. Um, and so I guess I would just say that I, Randy Knack, on behalf of the residents of Menominee, Wisconsin, dear, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as White Kane Safety Day. So duly noted and said. Thank you. Um, I would hand it over to the administrator, uh, Eric.
Thank you. So, just to prepare you, October sixteenth, our next council meeting, that's where we'll be presenting our initial draft of the city budget, which will include capital improvement projects as well as the subsidy requests. And so subsequent hearings will be held until eventually we anticipate approving the budget on November twentieth, but we may have to have special hearings as we've had in the past, either early hearings or on additional days. And so that's just subject to the needs of the budget process. And with that, turn it over to Dave Schofield to provide his report.
Yeah, just a quick update. Heller Road is being paved, uh, second lift is being paved tomorrow. If you've been out there, the first lift was paved I think last Wednesday. Second lift is going on tomorrow. Um, and then Stokie Trail, we're hoping in either end of the week or early next week to get that pavement on there and get that road, or to get that trail reopened, so. Um, those two projects are moving forward. Uh, one thing that is uh, less impactful for the city directly, but our residents certainly, um, the county and the DOT have had uh, some pretty severe issues with Union Pacific on uh, County Highway B. There's also a couple of County Highway H, uh, Highway twelve, and a number of locations. Uh, they're going to be in there, Union Pacific was forced to the table to come and re, redo that uh, crossing at B. Uh, they also did our roads at Stokie Parkway, Wagner Street and Cedar Falls Road. Um, Stokie Parkway and Cedar Falls Road are, are not terrible. Wagner Street is, Wagner Street's the one that goes into Banks Hardwoods, um, in the industrial park. It, it's, it's pretty awful. It's not as bad as B, I guess that's a good thing, um, but it's not great. Um, they have not yet done Wilson Street, but we anticipate that's probably going to happen here, so. Do apologize to all of our residents that have had to deal with some of those issues. Um, be, be assured that DOT is all over them right now, so. Just wanted to give that update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other miscellaneous business and communications? All right, I think Eric has one more.
I just have one more. I'm just kind of looking for an informal head nod on this. With, with all the talk about calling of deer herds and animals and the complaints that City Hall has received about the various deer in town, much like up by my house, which looks like some kind of Disney menagerie with, with all the deer walking through there. Just by a, a nod in the heads, would, would there be interest in having us look at contracting with someone to do controlled deer hunts or something similar to try to wean down that population? Okay, that's enough said. All right, we will keep that on the radar for twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Okay, any other communications or miscellaneous business? Okay, any other communications or miscellaneous business? Oh, Cody, go ahead, please.
I wanted to make a suggestion. I think the White Kane Safety Day proclamation is really good. Do you think we could share it on like the city website, social medias?
Yeah, the, this we could share on the city website. We're a little reserved on the city website for city business, but this is city business. And we can certainly share that. So thank you, Cody. And I think it, perhaps it would be. We try to, we're trying to build it up. We're getting better at it, but we're still, you know, it's a, it's a work in progress. Okay, anything else? Okay, everybody. Okay, good. Okay, we're going to keep our meeting moving then. Along with the claims, there is a revised claims list in front of you this evening. So if anybody would like to make a motion to pay the claims, now is your opportunity to do so. Everybody's hands are up. Mary, go ahead, please.
I would make a motion to approve the claims, the revised claims list as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Gretchen?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pay the claims. Any additional information or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
License list. Okay. And then we brings us down to licenses. It'd be just a normal license list.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the license list as presented.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion? Mary?
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the license list. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we do not have any closed session tonight. So if anybody'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Oh, Cody?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, motion's been made to adjourn. And somebody like to second that motion, Eric?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening.